Good morning. Good morning, everyone. We're calling to be to order. And if you could please rise for the invitation and the pledge of allegiance.
Lordy, thank you for giving us another month, another week on this beautiful earth that you have created. Thank you for bringing us all here together today with the focus of our students and making Pinellas County the best place to live, to work, to raise a family, to play that we can for these students, these kids, these adults, all those who are here to better their lives and learn from the outstanding faculty that we have at St. Petersburg College. I ask that you would give us wisdom today, that you would allow us to make the decisions that are right for this institution. I thank you for all the blessings that you continue to give us here, for the people that are so dedicated to the work of this college. Thank you again for this time here together. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I think for the first time, at least beside him on the board, we don't have any retirement resolutions. So, we will move on. As we talked about the past couple of months, we're trying to adjust the agenda a little bit to provide some presentations that are more in line with specifically the strategic plan, as well as providing some mission opportunities for the board and those watching the meetings to really get to know our students and our programs and our faculty. So, with that, I'll invite Andrea Henning, who is going to be our SPC Spotlight this morning. Andrea, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Cole. Good morning, Board of Trustee members. Madam President, my name is Andrea Henning, and we thank you for the priority you have placed on workforce at SPC. We are in fall harvest time at the Workforce Institute. We've experienced significant financial growth. We're in the black in quarter one with a net surplus of 75,000, and that is supported by significant growth in our corporate partnerships. This morning, we'd like to shine a light on our Power Town partnership. And I'd like to, wow, here they are! And I'd like to recognize, you know, the power of collaboration to build one partnership is before us, and these are just a few of the members. I'd like to give a shout out to our Career Source team member, Jennifer Brackney, and your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And our CPSI team, and our engineering, our manufacturing, our building arts team, our grants team, PDICU, Jennifer, our apprenticeship team, and our Workforce Institute team. It takes a village to create a partnership, right? And so, thank you all. I specifically want to introduce Valentina Berry and Dr. Susan Garrett. They are part of our Workforce Institute team. They are featured in the bucket trucks as well with hard hats, with the Titan logo. And they have really shepherded this important partnership with Power Town. Susan, I'd like to ask you if you would share more about the partnership and introduce our Power Town partnership.
My pleasure. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
The collaboration with Power Town is going to allow us to meet the needs of skilled trades workers, professionals, as well as open new career pathways for many students to come. With the expertise of Power Town and the workforce education talent of SPC, we intend to develop a world-class program that will become the model for all electrical worker training across this country. Thanks to the Quick Response Training Grant awarded by Career Source Florida, Power Town will be able to train 100 new employees in the coming year. So, with that, I introduce you to the President of Power Town, Steve Townsend.
All right. Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
It's nice to be in front of you all. If I look like I'm growling, I have a little virus. It's called Bell's palsy, so I would be smiling ear to ear because I'm completely ecstatic to be in front of the college here and to start this partnership with you all. It's been quite a journey for us with the, there's a little bit of lack of training in this type of field, and the curriculum isn't where it really needs to be. So, we're very excited to partner up with both of you, with the college. And it's been kind of overwhelming for our employees, the employees that are out there are very excited about this. So, I'd like to thank the college and the team for our dream to finally get this training on the horizon.
Yes.
And together, I think, between the college and Power Town, this is going to be a great thing for the industry that is so badly needed. So, we're much appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and we are ecstatic about this opportunity. We cannot wait to get it moving and to expand it. And so, thank you, Career Source. We are so grateful. And Steve, we're very happy that you're here. And to the SPC family, you rock. Excellent job, and let's get it going. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Before you all leave, does anybody have any questions about the type of training that they're doing or anything, just to be sure? Okay, very good. Well, moving on to our comments section, I first just want to thank everyone for their continued hard work. And this week, Dr. Williams and Trustee Gibbons and I will be leaving tomorrow to go to San Francisco to the Association of Community College Trustees Annual Meeting. And so, we're looking forward to learning and bringing back continued best practices. It's a wonderful opportunity to get some good continuing education from the trustees level, and I'm always refreshed to know exactly how on point our administration and our team is working hard to be sure that they're delivering really the nation's best products. Our metrics, our strategic plan, and our focus are truly on point. So, thank you all for that. And with that, any other comments by our board? Well, excuse me, I was involved in the ISPS interviews last Friday, I think it was, and very, very encouraged by the candidates who picked the top two. And they're going to be in a public forum for interview this Thursday, I believe, right? Yeah. But I also had, I had an SPC day, actually, because I went that night to an alumni mixer that was, it was very exciting to see how many people were there. I'm going to get it wrong, but I think that the graduate that was the longest ago was in like 1967 that was there. And it was just neat to see that many people come out on a Friday night and celebrate their being an alumni of SPC. So, that's great. That's it. Thank you. Kristi Kowal?
I will be attending my first board meeting at the Lippa Ratner Art Museum on October 30th, so I'm looking forward to that. And I will be touring the Seminole campus here in a week with Provost Strickland. So, I don't know if he's here, but I'm looking forward to that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Nothing. All right. Dr. Williams?
Okay, I'm not normally going to bring this much, but I just have to brag for a minute, if you don't mind. I don't think Kristi Costello is in the audience, but she's been working with Dr. Renard on how we can improve the call center. And in one quarter, she saved the college $28,777.
All right.
And to me, that's worth bragging about. Last week, we got word that our AS degree in cybersecurity has been designated as a National Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense Education. This is a huge opportunity for us, and I think maybe one of the last times they're going to give this designation to a state college. And so, I want to applaud the team. Thank you so much for the leadership and the work that you've done to make sure that we continue to be, I think Chair Cole said, we're going to be the nation's best products. We're going to provide the nation's best, and we're doing that. Also, want to applaud those who led the Keys to Manhood. We had over 100 young men on campus Friday to learn about academic excellence, how to be, have a better life, and how to move forward. And on the same day, we had a little over 100 young ladies learning a lot on the International Day of the Girls. So, we're doing a lot with community engagement and making sure that we're a part of the solution to today's problems. So, I'm real proud of that. So, we had over 250 young people on campus learning more about life. You talked about the mixer, so I won't go there. Oh, Mark St. Louis was recently appointed to the Education Law Committee of Florida Bar Association, which is a huge deal. C-Campus, this was the big deal last week. Congressman Chris was here to give us a check in the amount of $333,446 that will be renewable up to four years, which would be a total of 1.2, a little closer to 1.3 million, for us to assist our students with childcare. That is amazing. We also received a grant for $120,000 partnering with the YMCA and Juvenile Welfare Board on Children's Literacy Instruction. Fifteen of our athletes were named to the Florida 2018-19 All-Academic Team for having above a 3.3 GPA. And we talked about that. And then, the final was that we're a partner in the Arts Business Academy for Creative Artists that will be providing professional development training for those geared towards emerging artists, musicians, and writers. And so, we're excited about that as well. So, good job, St. Petersburg College. You did a great job last month.
It's the point of our agenda for public comment, and we have no public comment cards, but if there was anyone who wanted to speak, very well. So, we will move on to the review and approval of minutes from our August 20th board meeting. Any comments or amendments?
I'm with approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Nope. Okay. Monthly reports. Ms. Gardner?
Good morning, Chair Cole. I don't have a report this month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next monthly report is with the SPC Foundation. So, Mr. Turtle, this is one of the adjustments in our agenda. I'll try to kind of highlight based on what Dr. Williams and I, and we appreciate your feedback too, of other changes that we can make, but we thought it was important during monthly reports to rotate through different specific either DSOs or departments who can offer a little bit of more specific information. So, Mr. Turtle?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Cole, trustees, and Dr. Williams. Today, I'll be presenting to you on the foundation, but first, I wanted to introduce the leadership team from Institutional Advancement. The Executive Director of Marketing and Strategic Communications, Rita Farlow. Executive Director of Grants, Dr. Katie Schultz. And Executive Director of Advancement Services, Theresa McFarlane. Steve Shepherd is almost always here, but of course, is Steve here? No. Of course, Steve's not here today. So, but Steve is a member of the Board of Directors and is often, is often here to support the college. Building a Culture of Philanthropy. Since I arrived here at St. Pete College on March 4th, I've been working to instill a culture of philanthropy within St. Pete College and the community. For SBC, it starts with the three As: being an advocate, being an ambassador. Trustee Stone Cypher, you might notice I left you a pin, in case you forget it when you're out and about at events. Just want to make sure.
I have two.
All right. Perfect.
Three, maybe.
And then, asker. This does not mean that everyone asks for a gift, but it means that everyone asks the community to be engaged with St. Pete College, which leads me to believe that everyone is a fundraiser. We're all involved in the process of inviting donors to invest in our mission to make a difference in this community. By the way, that photograph is Dr. Whitaker and Betty Gaston. They are both donors to the College of Nursing, longtime donors, wonderful, wonderful stewards of St. Pete College and the College of Nursing. Here we have our fundraising goals for this year and our dollars raised as of September 30th. As you can see, we've raised over $1.5 million so far this year. And, oh, last year, I'm sorry. Last year, we raised 1.5 as of this year, and this year, we've raised 1.86 as of this year. Our overall fundraising goal for this year is 2.44 million. We are already 77% to that goal. So, very proud of our team, fundraising team. Jody Collins is our other fundraiser, frontline fundraiser, and Adele, thank you so much, Dr. Williams, for stealing Adele back. She is great with all the numbers. So, thank you. Next, I just wanted to highlight a few small ways that the Foundation is supporting SBC. Working with our recruitment team, we provided $2,500 in funding for an application fee waiver to assist with the recruiting prior to the fall term. We also provided two, three credit class scholarships as an incentive to participate in the Titan Lives webinar, which assisted students in class registration and financial aid to get those students who were in the pipeline to actually finish their registration. The Foundation again will support students going to Tallahassee, as well as support our faculty and staff with the opportunity to apply for a Titan Achievement Grant and a Silverberg Grant, each at $3,000 each. The Silverberg Grant is a private donor grant that actually, Jody Jane Silverberg is a community member, and if you were at the alumni event, that community room is named in honor of the Silverbergs. So, they are, they are another great donor to the college. Lastly, we have awarded over 1,500 scholarships totaling $1.25 million so far this year. Katie Carter is our scholarship manager. She's not here today, but she is our complete scholarship guru. So, happy to have her on our team. Here we have some further breakdown of the other programs that the Foundation supports. Of note, we have great community support from our corporate sponsors to support women on the way. Dr. Williams also mentioned the Keys to Manhood, which we had on the Seminole campus last Friday, and the Pearls and Portfolios Program, which was part of the International Day of the Girl. They were actually in this very room. So, that was a great day to have both of those groups on campus celebrating St. Pete College. To build on this success and to further engage our own faculty, staff, and alumni, our community and the investment of the college, we have created the Titan Fund. As a Foundation, we have previously focused on investments and scholarships. These investments are very important and help get the students in the door, but we also need to assist them in successfully getting across the stage with a degree or a certificate. So, the Titan Fund supports the whole college. It's our annual fund, and it's unrestricted to help sustain academic programs, scholarships, innovative program, student support services, technology, and every other aspect of the college. With the launch of this new Titan Fund, the Foundation Board of Directors wants to show its commitment to St. Pete College by offering a $30,000 challenge. Every donation to the Titan Fund will be matched dollar for dollar until December 31st. Thank you to everyone who has already made a gift to that initiative, and I encourage everyone to participate and make a difference. Go Titans!
Thank you. Excellent.
Any questions?
Are there any questions? I did want to especially thank the Foundation Board of Directors for the match for the Titan Fund. The Titan Fund really grew through Jesse's idea, but as a direct result of this board's ask of the Foundation to expand their focus and to really decide and embrace the college's priorities collectively and to broaden their focus away from scholarships. And so, the fact that they have raised their hand and pulled out their pocketbooks to say, here's money that we are willing to match ourselves to raise money. So, I have donated to the Titan Fund, will again, now that this matches is here for sure. So, I strongly encourage each of you to do so as well. So, thank you.
I also left you car magnets that you can probably put on your cars as another way to be an ambassador of St. Pete College. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good job. All right. Our strategic focus this month is student success and academic achievement. So, Dr. Crawford?
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, Dr. Williams. I'm Ms. Crawford. I'm here to share with you a new monthly dashboard that's going to help us track our achievement of our strategic plan. As you're well aware, our strategic plan has a series of metrics like retention and graduation rates that are really annual-based or semester-based. And what we wanted to provide for you was a way for you to look at metrics on a monthly basis that can kind of show our achievement and our movement or progression towards those goals. They're broken down into the five areas, the five different plans or working committees that have initiatives to support the overall achievement of our goals. And I'm going to spend some time today walking you through each one of these so that you're able to understand some of the nuances of them, and that way, next month, when you see it, you'll be able to focus more on how are we doing? Are we going up? Are we going down? And what are the rationales behind that? Keep in mind that this is a dynamic report. This is something that we put together in a month, and I want to just take two seconds to thank all of my committees and especially the marketing team and Harrison for making it look so incredibly gorgeous so that we can present it to you in a way that made sense. So, just to start off, one of our key metrics on our strategic plan is student success. And you're going to see that in the top right-hand corner. We're trying to increase our student success by 2% over the course of the three years of our strategic plan, and our goal is to get to 80.2%. Right now, we're at 79.2%, so we're well on our way. We're very pleased with that. So, let's talk about each one of these areas. And you can feel free to ask me questions as I'm going along, or you can wait until the end. I'm good. So, the first area is recruitment, and this is focused on the number of new students in our credit-bearing programs or the overall number of students who are entering into our Workforce Institute. So, the very first metric has to do with the number of admission applications. All of the metrics in this bucket are actually directly related to the strategic plan. So, these are three-year targets that you're going to notice. The first target for this increase of admissions applications is 10% with the goal of getting 16,800 applications within a year. This is a calendar year, and so, it starts in January, ends in December. And this is key because the more applications we get, obviously, the more people we can try to recruit. And our recruitment team has a very solid process of following from admissions through enrolling through the application process. So, you can see our baseline back in 2017 when we started our strategic plan, up to this point in time, so through, through the end of September, we had received 11,489 applications. In 2018, that dropped a little bit, and in 2019, that dropped a little bit more. This is directly related to the next metric, which is again, a three-year goal of increasing the number of new students who we have enrolled. At the time of the creation of the strategic plan, we had a target of an increase of 3.5% with a goal of getting an annual number of 8,000, sorry, 9,718. You can see that the fall of '17 baseline was 5,468. You can see we went down a little bit in the fall, and we went down a little bit in the fall of 19, this current 19 as well. Again, this goes through the end of, goes through October 2nd. Now, the, all of these numbers are in red, and you can be saying to yourself, oh, my goodness, that's not a good thing. But I have some good news that I can share with you. We just ran our numbers, when we send all of our numbers up to the state, and they look at how we send in funded FTE. That's the number of students, the number of courses that students are taking on a full-time basis. So, take all of the courses across all of the student body and kind of divide by 30. That's a good way to think about it. And right now, our funded FTE, year over year, has not dropped. So, our student numbers have gone down, but basically, our students are taking more courses. This is good for progression. This is good for reaching towards completion quicker. So, it's, it looks like it's a negative, but at the end of the day, the funded part is good. Our last-
Sorry, Ms. Crawford. Quick question. So, the, the numbers we're looking at at the top, the 9,718, that's for the entire year, correct?
For the entire year, yes.
And the numbers we're seeing down below that are just for the fall?
Just for the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Okay. So, our last bucket in this, in this group has to do with the Workforce Institute, and you can see that we set an annual, a three-year target of increasing the number of students who go through the Workforce Institute by 40%. That was a very ambitious goal. We were hoping to end all the way up in the 6,000 number of students range. For the overall annual of 2017-18, we had 4,309. That's where we started. We were trying to get up from that point. You can see where our baseline for fall of '18 was and where we are as of 9/30 today. That's an increase of 14%. So, congratulations to all the work that the Workforce Institute is doing. If we go to the middle bucket, this has to do with retention, and obviously, these are initiatives that we're focused on, how do we keep the students that we have? We do have a strategic plan goal of increasing overall retention by 3.2%. We want to get it up to 72% overall. This is a fall-to-fall retention rate, and we're currently at 69.3%, and we have been increasing year over year. So, that's a good sign. So, the three initiatives that are underneath this area, the first one has to do with increasing our learning resource center usage. That has to do with tutoring for our students, library initiatives, introductions to the library. And we want to have an overall target for the fall of 18,800. That's this fall's target. That's a lot of visits. It actually represents a pretty big jump for us. And you can see last fall, our baseline at this point, so at the end of September, we were at 11,332. We are currently up 16%, and we really believe that we will have no problem hitting this goal. This means our students are taking advantage of those extra resources to help student success. The second one has to do with increasing events attendance. We shared with you at some point the idea that students who are engaged with the college, who attend these events, when we ran their success rates, they actually have an 8% increase in their overall success rate. So, the more students that we can convince to come to these events, the more likely we have them to be engaged, more likely to stay, more likely to feel that sense of belonging. So, last year's baseline for the year was 24,533. We have a goal for this year of hitting 30,000 and a fall goal of 14,000. You can see last fall, we were at 6,000 at the end of September. This fall, we're down about 100 students. But that, a lot of that has to do with the fact that we hold weekly events. So, each one of our career and academic communities hold an entire week events for students to attend, and we started a week later this semester. So, we're only in September. We think that we won't have any problem meeting this goal, and you'll see this kind of change month to month, how many students are attending these events. The last one is decreasing our withdrawal rate. Last fall, I shared with you that we had a record low of students. We had a drop of 10.4%. That was astronomical for us, fewer students withdrawing from class based upon the initiatives and the support of our faculty members to convince students to stay in there, don't give up. We want you to stay with us. So, this fall, we put, we set ourselves another ambitious target because you can't just keep dropping, dropping, dropping. So, we set it for 5%. And you can see the fall over fall at Week Six, so end of September, where we were at, this is a decrease of 19%, which you're like, whoa, that's crazy. It is crazy. It's going to change and fluctuate every single week, especially as we get to the 60% mark when students will, will term withdrawal. So, you'll see this one move up and down every single time I'm here with you. So, if we move all the way to the top right, you're going to, where we have employee engagement. If you remember when our Human Resources Department had a survey that went out to all faculty and all staff, and we kind of identified those areas where we needed to focus on, well, this area has to do with unlocking the magic, and this is an acronym that stands for Meaning, Autonomy, Growth, Impact, and Connection, of our committed staff. And we have certain areas that we really want to focus on, and two of those, one is growth. You can see where that survey, the overall, all the questions that rolled up into growth, we are at 65%. And there were two buckets underneath that, one for professional development ops, opportunities, and one for feeling, sorry, feeling challenged. And so, when we have event, we have events like Discovery Day, we're going to send out a poll survey to anybody who attended the Discovery Day and say, how are you feeling about this? professional development? And the same questions will be asked, and we're going to see if we can move the needle on that 50%. Are people feeling like they're more, have better opportunities? Was this a good opportunity, et cetera? So, these won't change every month, but depending upon the initiatives that we do have, they will change on a month-to-month basis, one or two or such is the best way to describe that. Underneath autonomy, we have two areas, which includes feeling trusted and feeling empowered. And again, as we have opportunities for faculty and staff to participate in events and initiatives, those poll surveys will go out and we'll track how we're moving the needle on those areas. Down in the bottom left-hand corner is the learning experience. If you remember, at our last board meeting of the last academic year, the Learning Experience Committee came and shared how they had done over the course of the year. They've set their new goals for the year, and these are faculty-led initiatives to help support student success. And they've chosen three areas. The first one has to do with increasing the number of professional development opportunities for the faculty, and they're going to hope all of these initiatives increase at least by 10%. So, you'll see where we are fall over fall, which is an increase right now of 23.7%. We have a series of hosted webinars that are ongoing right now and are very well-attended. The second one has to do with increased spark usage. And spark is the ability for a faculty member through our learning management system, so their courses, to text message directly a student's phone. And those, we found when we ran some numbers, that those faculty members who send a series of sparks or text messages that are impactful, that's the key, not just like, hey dude, how are you? But like, hey, I'm noticing that you know you're a day late, or don't forget that you have your assignment coming up, I know you can do this. Those faculty members that were sending more and more sparks were achieving double-digit gains for their students' success rates. So, we have a lot of initiatives that are around using these faculty tools. And you can see right now, we're up 30% fall over fall. The last one is also a faculty tool within the learning management system, and this is contacting students through their emails. What it doesn't take into account is if you email a student through Microsoft Office or Gmail or any other form of communication. But we just hosted Faculty Tools Week, and we believe that these, both of these numbers will show some good gains the next time you see them. And then, our very last one has to do with resource realignment. And these are, we're tracking funding opportunities that supports student success. So, this isn't specific budget that you look at every month. The first one has to do with grants. And I have a big word in there underneath the target that this is impact-driven. The goal of the Grants Department is not to get money, 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 but it's to find grants that truly support initiatives that we think will support student success. So, we are showing you numbers, but the goal is not get more. The goal is to get the right grants to support student success in the best way. And you can see where we are based upon the first quarter. We've almost met our entire goal for last year. And you saw that kind of on Dr. Turtle, sorry, Mr. Turtles. I'll give you a doctorate, sure. Mr. Turtle's presentation.
I'll take one too, please.
Pass those out. It's like it's a Dr. Seuss right now, I'm sorry. The second one has to do with revenue. And I think this one is really fascinating because the, when the Resource Alignment Committee met, they wanted to say, what is the one thing that we can truly impact? And so, they've broken down the budget into state funding and non-state funding. And our non-state funding has to do with additional increased tuition revenues, auxiliary revenues, leases that we do, all of those extraneous things that feed into this non-state funding bucket. And they want to, they have a budgeted number of 70 million, and they're going to track this every month to see how are we doing? And we're hoping, obviously, to exceed the budgeted amount over the course of the year. And the final one has to do with the Titan Fund that Mr. Turtle shared with you earlier. You can see last year, this was not a thing, so that's obviously a zero. We're currently at 41,000-plus, so please send in your money. And this is an increase of 21%. And this is what I have. Any questions?
Wonderful, Dr. Crawford. Thank you. I know it's a lot of information. Do you all have any comments or questions today? This is, Dr. Williams and I went through this over the course of the month and tried to pick out what we thought were the things that could truly show on a month-to-month basis. Some of the things that we track are more annual metrics or quarterly metrics that it wouldn't be impactful to see every month. So, we were trying to determine, based on the conversation that the boards had over the past several months, what was important to the board and what would you want to see on a month-to-month basis so we can determine, you know, where do we need to shift our focus? Lots of times, we hear presentations about different things that are happening at the college, and we don't want it to be a program de jour that we're focusing on, right? So, this was Dr. Crawford's best attempt, and a very good one, at interpreting our conversations as well. I especially appreciate the resource alignment. This is something we've been talking about generally, and you'll see some adjustments to how we present our financials anyway, about the overall health of the college. It's not necessarily where we are as compared to budget because we do a generally good job of staying on budget. But where are we and where do we need to be to become a great, to be the great community or state college that we want to be? So, those are some of the philosophies behind it. I think we'll probably have a few tweaks just as we go along, but certainly open to your feedback. Are there different metrics that you think would be more helpful to see or presented in a different manner? Or anything else?
I think this is fantastic. My question, so we'll receive this at each monthly meeting going forward.
Yes.
Will we have Dr. Crawford walking us through these with background at each meeting? Or is that every other month? Are we still working that out?
We're still working that out. I think, I think we plan to have the metrics presented each month. And then, we can decide as a group if we wanted to run through them all or just highlight some specifics?
I mean, I guess, I guess as it's needed, it's kind of nice to have the backstory behind some of this stuff. For instance, with the events attendance, we started a week later this year, hence we're dragging a little bit from last year, right? Just little tidbits like that, I think, are helpful. But overall, I think this is fantastic. I don't want to add too much more to this, if at all, because then I think maybe we get, we make it a little muddled and not as clear with what we're looking at. But for me, this is extremely beneficial.
Thank you. Well, I definitely want to applaud the team. And Sabrina will tell you, it was a true team effort. And what this is doing is, it's helping the college focus on the strategic plan. Instead of waiting to the end of the year and pull the crank, we want to show movement and to bring data to you that we can show every month, we're making progress or we're addressing it. And yesterday, we did talk about whether Dr. Crawford would be the one to present each month. But there will be times when you may want to go a little deeper on one area, and the expert of that area may be the one standing. Otherwise, she has to be trained every month on every area to know all the details. But this was good for us and a good opportunity for us to share the monthly movements and the intentional work that's being done to meet those goals going forward. And so, we're very proud of the work.
I'd just like to say, one of my favorite things to tell people is what gets measured gets done. So, thank you for giving us a great measurement tool. It would be, I think, beneficial at the end of the semester, maybe, to add completion rate or graduation or-
Like we're graduated.
-to the success ultimately that we're looking for.
No, I can tell you, Vice Chair Bello, that the state is looking at that. So, very good for you to bring that forward. They're looking at the completion, and we need to be eyeing that as well. And you'll be getting data on that, but I agree with you on that 100%. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Bonnie Kessler with Phi Theta Kappa.
So, we just shared the information that when students are engaged, they tend to do better because they're engaged and they stay on campus and they grow. What Professor Kessler is going to share today is Phi Theta Kappa, along with her partner in crime, her chapter lead, one of our students. So, she's going to be sharing with you some information about Phi Theta Kappa.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chair Cole, trustees, Dr. Williams. It is truly an honor to be here in my capacity as advisor to the ADU chapter of Phi Theta Kappa. And in my history, I don't remember ever being invited to a trustees meeting, so it's truly an honor. And this came about as a result of our meeting with Dr. Williams, which she has graciously held with us every summer since she came on board, to get feedback from us and for us to get feedback from her as we plan our projects. So, my chapter president, Katerina Weber, will talk to you about the student side. But first, what I want to do is share with you an overview of Phi Theta Kappa and let you know what all five of our chapters are busy doing. So, how many be familiar with Phi Theta Kappa already? Anybody a member? Yay. You are a Phi Theta Kappa member for life once you're inducted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, it is the International Honor Society for Two-Year Colleges. We have five chapters that cover all of our campuses. They celebrated their 100th birthday in 2018, and ADU is the oldest chapter in Florida, third, we were the third onboard in 1950. So, you can see the chapters listed. We have a variety of membership numbers from semester to semester. Students are invited at the end of every semester to join if they meet the eligibility requirements. On an international level, Phi Theta Kappa requires anywhere from a 3.0 to a 3.5 overall cumulative GPA. All of our chapters accept 3.25 and a minimum of 12 semester hours completed. So, students have a lot of opportunity to develop their leadership skills through engagement with and collaboration with administration. They also get very involved in campus life, so they're very engaged, and they have an opportunity to attend local, state, and international conferences. They also are eligible for various scholarships. So, what I'm first going to tell you is what the Beta Theta Omega chapter at Seminole is busy doing. Each semester or each year, chapters decide to shoot for a five-star tat status. And to do that, they have to complete an Honors in Action project, a college project, and various service initiatives within their own community. The Honors in Action project is research-based. Students have a choice of nine themes. They select a theme, they research it, and then they develop an action plan that makes sense based on their research. This year, it looks like Beta Theta Omega is busy working with Pinellas Beekeepers, and there's a Seminole campus Beehive area on the Seminole campus. For their college project, they revamped and expanded the food pantry on their campus, and they do a variety of community events like beach cleanups, movies on the lawn, campus-wide, kidball tournaments. And I know they're involved, as all the chapters are, in campus events. Amber Eslin was the chapter advisor, and she won a Paragon Award for Excellence as a new advisor at last year's international conference just this past April in Orlando. The Alpha Zeta Tau chapter up on Tarpon Springs is very busy working with the Citizens Alliance for Progress. So, as part of their service project, 15 of their students provided sessions and meetings with 18 students through that program, and they were voted the most engaged club on the Tarpon Campus this past year. And I hear from my fellow advisor, Dr. Eric Tucker, that this was their most ambitious of their chapter service projects. So, go Alpha Zeta Tau. Alpha Omega Beta covers all state health, education, and vet tech. It's been a real year of growth for Anjan Perfetti, who decided to take on this leadership opportunity for her. So, she's been building the chapter membership. They're striving for that five-star chapter status this year, and I have no doubt that she will achieve that. We have also invited them to join us on the Gibbs Campus for our induction in November. So, we're going to combine the two. We tried to combine everyone, but boy, it was hard to coordinate everyone for those induction ceremonies. Tau Zeta in Clearwater, very busy rebuilding their tradition from year to year. You have more students, less students, more involvement, less involvement. It's very, very fluid, but they remain very active up on the Clearwater campus. And you can see from their pictures, they do a lot on campus. So, I'm here to represent ADU. And the pictures that you see on the left-hand side were from our wonderful, award-winning year at the International Catalyst Convention this past April. The students won three awards, two of them for their Honors in Action research project. They researched visions of justice, and they initiated a mentoring program with students up at the Juvenile Detention Center. So, they won two national awards for that. And they also made it into the top 40 out of 1,250 chapters internationally. So, we're shooting for the same kind of result this year. This year, the Honors in Action project, the research has centered around child protective services and the Sheriff's Department. And students have met with Representative LaFalla, and they are advocating for Jordan's Law. So, that's what they're working on this year for Honors in Action. The college project started with a meeting with our campus provost, Dr. Leslie Haver, who's been a real champion of Phi Theta Kappa. Students have gotten involved with the Lomond ecosystem and have worked with Father Bill Wasasso from the Dream Center. They toured the Lomond neighborhood to get an idea of what the neighborhood is like. And the plan is to build and install little lending libraries in Lomond, which will provide reading material for families and also will have some information about St. Petersburg College reaching into that community. And I believe some of our members will be participating in the Halloween night trick-or-treating that they're doing in the Lomond Center. So, that's what ADU is busy working on this year. And so, here are just some awards. ADU is a very, very storied chapter. It has always been award-winning. And you can see, in San Antonio, we made it to the top 100 chapters. These are all ADU, but I know my colleagues on the other campuses will soon be up on the leaderboard. In Nashville, they won Hallmark Award for the college project, and I thank Dr. Connor for getting ADU involved in the completion of a mural on the Student Services Building on the Gibbs Campus. I won a Paragon Award for Excellence as a new advisor at that convention. Kansas City last year, Dr. Williams surprised us with her presence. She serves on the National Board. And as I was sitting in the audience and they're announcing the Hallmark Awards, I thought, please, Lord, let us win something. And thank goodness, we did, for the Honors in Action Research Project on Solar Energy. In Orlando, I already told you, they won three awards for their very hard work. I'm here to tell you, there is nothing harder to do than be an advisor to an active, busy PTK chapter. But I wouldn't trade it for the world. The opportunity to see these students grow as leaders, the opportunity to see them engaged with campus life, to meet administration, it's a growth experience for the faculty advisor as well. So, before I take questions, I'd like to invite Katerina to get up and talk a little bit. I know she's nervous, but little did she know she'd take this on when she became chapter president.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Phi Theta Kappa has four hallmarks: leadership, fellowship, scholarship, and service. Phi Theta Kappa provides members with many leadership opportunities and a chance to develop and improve their leadership skills. A big way of doing this is through a regional leadership conference every year. Another great way is with the Five-Star Competitive Edge Online Program, which is a great way to improve an individual's professional soft skills, which employers value. Fellowship is important with Phi Theta Kappa. Fellowship is a great way to bring a chapter together and create trust among members. It is also a great way to meet and connect with members within your own chapter and students from other community colleges nationwide at conferences. Phi Theta Kappa offers a wide variety of scholarships and transfer scholarships that are exclusive to members to help them afford to further their education. They even offer some scholarships for master-level degrees. Membership in Phi Theta Kappa also distinguishes students from applying to prestigious others, I'm so sorry, other students from the other applying, I'm going to restart this, I'm so sorry. Membership in Phi Theta Kappa also distinguishes students from the others applying to prestigious universities. Service is a big part of Phi Theta Kappa as well. They are big into improving colleges and communities through opportunities. The annual Honors in Action in college projects have an overall goal of having, of having, I'm so sorry, impact on the college and community. Speaking from my own experience, when I started college, I started at HCC with the intention of transferring to USF. I ended up having safety issues at HCC and decided to leave when a friend told me about SPC. When I started SPC, I had the intention of being here just long enough to get my AA and get accepted. and get accepted to USF. And when I joined Phi Theta Kappa, I decided I should get involved a little bit. That way, I can say I was an active member. Then I got bit by the bug and could not help but get more and more involved with this amazing honor society. When I joined Aidenew, I never had the intention of, of becoming an officer, let alone the president of the honor society. Phi Theta Kappa has gotten me to step out of my comfort zone in more ways than I ever could have imagined. It has also helped me immensely with my leadership skills and my severe fear of public speaking. Aidenew helped me get involved with SGA. And between Aidenew, SGA, amazing faculty, and student life, I could not bring myself to leave for USF, which had always been a goal of mine since I was a child. Thank you for your time. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you.
So as you can see, Phi Theta Kappa fosters engagement. They have a 91% completion rate nationwide. So students who get involved with Phi Theta Kappa stay with the program and finish their degrees. Any questions from any of you?
Why, thank you both very much for being here today. This is great to hear and I think great information for us, for us to have as a board. What do you think would encourage more students to join the honor society going forward?
I'm not really sure how to answer that question. We just went to a leadership conference a week ago at Stetson University in Deland, and we talked about this a lot with other faculty advisors in some of our workshop rounds. Some of it at times has to do with the membership fee. I do nominate three students every semester for what's called a Golden Opportunity Scholarship. And then what we do is accept some provisional members who may not yet have the funds to join, and then eventually they do. We also take some provisional students who don't quite meet the criteria for full membership, meaning they can be involved in all of our projects, but they can't hold office and they can't vote. And sometimes that results in the student eventually making that GPA and becoming a member. I think maybe more awareness on campus of what Phi Theta Kappa is. I think sometimes students think it's a club, but we're actually an academic organization. So that's why at every QUAD event, we're there with a table, plenty of information, trying to keep students more well-informed about what Phi Theta Kappa is and the benefits that it affords them.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah. I'm sorry, it was 30 years ago. What is the membership fee?
It's $100.
So is that not something that we can do with the Titan Fund potentially?
We could.
And add it to the list?
Add it to the list. We could, we could certainly seek scholarships for the fee. We could certainly do that. Seriously, we could.
I mean, it is life-changing. And it does put you, set you up for a leadership role.
We're up into exploring.
I think Bonnie's also on to something about making sure students know it, yeah, marketing, making sure they understand the significance of it and participate. So, and that's something we're working on nationally.
Yes.
Excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Great job, Katerina.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda, we have no old business listed. Under new business, we have a personnel report, and we can take these as one motion after we review them. Grants and restricted fund contracts, Department of Military Affairs, Aurora Foundation, and U.S. Department of Justice. Do you have any questions or comments on any of the items under new business? And if not, can I have a motion to accept?
I move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Moving on to another new portion of our agenda, which is direct support organizations. We've had a lot of talk with the budget and with our resource alignment and about our DSOs. And so you should have received the audit reports for each one of our DSOs and, pardon?
We have to vote to it?
Yes. So we, hopefully you were able to review them. So we have three audit reports. The St. Petersburg College Foundation, the Leaper Ratner Museum, and the Institute for Strategic Policy. Did you all have any questions or do you want to discuss any of those audit reports?
No findings.
There were no findings, yes. Important to highlight. If not, is there a motion to accept those audit reports?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then for your information included, this is another new inclusion in the packet, is a monthly report. This will be a written report unless the organization is doing the spotlight at the beginning. But there are monthly reports for each one of the DSOs, which I thoroughly enjoyed reading. I think, I know that trustee Bello, you always try to give a report after you all have institute meetings as well. And I'm sure next month, we'll get a Leaper Ratner report from trustee Kidwell. So I think it was really important for us to stay on top of each one of these. So we appreciate each one of the directors of the museum and the institute in the Palladium for providing that. So they're just for your information sake and no action. There are other informational reports in our agenda under section nine of your package if you have any questions. Otherwise, we won't go through them.
And I just want to point out, this is where we also place the operational budget. So if you want to see what Jeanette usually brings monthly, they don't really change that much. And so that's why we place that.
Yes. Thank you for highlighting that. And if, and if anybody objects to that, please let us know. But we moved, Ms. Hunt does a great job telling us where we are compared to budget. And as I previewed before, usually we're right on track without any big bleeps. So we thought if we could have this as an informational report and then look as part of the dashboard and as part of the in-depth, if there is a larger health of the college issue that we're looking at financially, we'll bring that to the board. But unless there is some issue with enrollment that's driving a lack of tuition, you know, something that needs to bring to the board's attention, we'll otherwise include those charts that we usually get in our information reports. So, but please, again, this is all a work in progress, trying to figure out the best agenda moving forward. So let us know. Proposed changes to the Board of Trustees Rules Manual, there is none. And with that, our president's report.
Perfect. I wanted to bring back to you the progress we've made on the Student Success Center since last month. Our spot surveys were submitted to the state. We anticipate having approval by next week, sometime around there. We got news that they received it, and we're moving forward there. We're also meeting with the Realtor next Wednesday to get things put on, to get it posted, so that we can actually start selling the building, advertising the building.
District office.
Yep. District office. Yeah. The district office building. And that's where we are there. The renovation, we're going to start working on that once the spot survey comes back. And we'll keep you posted on where we are there. And then I believe, is it next week, we have the Titan Discovery Day is next week. If you guys want to join us, the school is closed that day for classes. And the college family comes together for an all-day professional development day. And so we'll be doing that next week. Jackie, what date is that?
22nd.
The 22nd. And so you're all welcome to come. I know you've, you've joined us a few times. If you can come, we'll definitely send you information on that. We're hoping to make that a fun day, but also a learning day. So hope you can join us. And I think that is all I have at this time for my report.
Great. Is there any other business, just a reminder, we're going to adjourn and re-adjourn as the Collegiate High School Board, because we do have one remaining action item there. But is there any other business to come before the Board of Trustees? Comments? With that, we'll adjourn the trustees meeting and re-adjourn as the Collegiate High School.
Good morning, Chair Cole, members of the board, and Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Raquel Giles, the principal of St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Gibbs Campus. It's an honor to be here with you today. I have with me Dr. Ian Call. He is the principal of the North Pinellas Campus. Thank you for the opportunity to bring forth the audit for the 2018-2019 school year and other highlights. The first item on the agenda for the 2018-2019 audit for review, and I respectfully request approval. There were no recommendations or findings.
Any questions about the audit? Motion?
Move approval?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have been working on several community building initiatives since there are new teachers and administrators at the Gibbs Campus. We really want to continue the legacy of excellence developed with this program by Mrs. Metz and the previous curriculum specialist, Dr. Call. Pictured in the lower-left hand corner is a picture of our juniors participating in a STEM activity. We brought our juniors in early, a few days before school started, and partnered them with other juniors, really recognizing the importance of their transition. Our goal is to provide a supportive learning environment for all of our scholars. Our Interact students participated in the Rotary Interact Bahamas Relief Event that was held at Countryside High School. And as you will see, pictured in the lower-right corner is one of our families participating in our FAFSA night that was held on October 3rd. We had over 30 families participating in this event. And we will continue to offer those FAFSA nights to support for those families. And we are looking so forward to our fall dance that's going to be held October 25th. We did develop our school improvement goals for Pinellas County Schools, and those school improvement goals, of course, are aligned to our mission and our vision. We also completed our safe school assessment as required by the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act. There were two recommendations in that assessment, that was to move our school safety officer to the front of the building and to create a single entrance. This school safety assessment is an online tool used by the state and the school district. And now, Dr. Call.
Good morning, Chair Cole, board members, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
I'm excited to be here to share some highlights of what's happening at our brand-new collegiate high school on the Tarpon Springs campus. So first thing, one of the first things we did was establish our PTSA. And so we have a full slate of parent volunteers, so we're excited about that. They've been working with the county officers to get everything up and running. So we've been doing fundraising so we can get our student activities up and running. We've had our first student activities at Collegiate High School. We obviously give them access to the wonderful resources of St. Pete College. We also like to make sure they have the high school experiences that are so important to our students. So we started with our game and karaoke night. So students came in, they were able to play games, play games with each other, play games with staff members, do a little singing, get beaten at ping pong by Dr. Call. Everyone had a good time that night. We had half our student body that was able to come and participate that. So that was great. We've already established 10 clubs, high school clubs for our students. So we have National Honor Society, SGA, Interact, Yearbook, Math Club, Science Club, Wellness Club, Multicultural Club, Art Club, and Take Stock in Children. So we really feel like we have a well-rounded offering for our students. So whatever they're interested in, they can participate, not only in those high school clubs, but also all the great things that are happening on this Tarpon Springs campus. We've also got involved in community through Rotary. So we volunteered at the Tarpon Springs Triathlon. Our students helped set up for the triathlon, actually filled up the cooler truck so that those things were available for the racers the next day, and they helped set up the barricades. We have our fall dance coming up. It's going to be in the lobby area of the Fine Arts Building. Students are very excited about having it there. They use that building regularly, so they're excited about, they've already planned out the decorations, where they're going to put, certain things, where they're going to put the dance floor. So they're very excited about that. We've developed our goals, they're the same exact goals, because we are going to meet the same high standards as the Collegiate High School in the south part of the county. So those goals are exactly the same. We've also completed our site assessment with Pinellas County Sheriff. They came through, made a couple of recommendations. We're working on implementing those recommendations. And we've also completed the FSAAT tool that is due to the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Wonderful. Congratulations to you both and all the hard work.
Yes.
Any questions?
Can we come to the dance?
You sure?
Wonderful. Thank you both so much. We appreciate it.
Good job.
Any other questions on the Collegiate High School program? With that, we'll adjourn that, and have a great month.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you.